You have the hair to drink.
I'm trying.
Yeah.
This is a good thing.
I'm trying that.
Are you, oh yeah.
Want some?
Those are.
Want some?
No.
You want some in a cup?
I could pour some in a cup for you.
Can we just get it, just get our energy some cakes?
Instead of water bottles.
That's okay.
I just realized.
That's good. I just realized.
Okay.
That's the opposite of energy.
I just like see people's faces.
Tonight, I'd like to invite Pastor Ricky Chambers from the Kingsburg Community Church to come up and give our invocation, and we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening just humbly lifting up our community to you. We ask for your grace and your mercy to abound in and among us. And God, I just lift up each council member here, our mayor, our city manager, the city staff, police chief, fire chief. God, we thank you, Lord, for appointing each one of them and choosing them to lead this community. And God, we're just blessed by great leaders here, so continue to strengthen them, continue to give them discernment to lead wisely. And so we ask your blessing over this time, over this meeting. We just ask you to continue to provide for our community in powerful ways financially and by drawing people here who love this city and seek to prosper the city and love the place they call home. So, Lord, may you graciously grant our leaders wisdom to govern confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement. And I especially ask for personal peace in their lives and joy in the task you set before them. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Just give them assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Kingsburg. So may Kingsburg always be a place where people seek to serve rather than to be served and seek to be a blessing, God, in everything they do. And we thank you for the example that Jesus set in this for us. That's in His precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I just realized I did what I do at school. Okay, we will call on the Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, Kingsburg City Council Meeting to Order pursuant to Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Gavin Newsom. The public will have the option to call in at 1-425-436-6335. The passcode is 5290024 to provide public comment. Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Taya.
I'm here.
Councilmember Colmar.
Here.
Councilmember Priscilla Union.
Here.
Councilmember Roman.
Here.
Mayor North.
Here.
Now, this is a joint meeting of the Kingsburg City Council, the Board of Directors of the City of Kingsburg Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Directors of the Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency. Do we need to do an additional roll call or just the one? Okay. So, the first thing that we will do is item number two, public comment. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council and the respective board of directors on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. And just a reminder that on this public comment, city council, we won't be able to respond back. We will start here in chambers before we open it up to the phone lines. So is there anyone, we'll start at the back row, that wants to come up for public comment? No? The next row? The third row from the back? Anybody want to come up for public comment? The next row? Okay, so seeing none in chambers, we will open up the phone lines to see if there is anyone on the phone line that would like to offer any public comment that is not listed on the agenda. Do we have anybody on the line? Hearing none, we will close public comment. Item three is to approve the joint meeting agenda. Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Item four, we have a presentation tonight. We have our swearing in of Diego Rodriguez, Fire Engineer, presentation by Fire Chief Daniel Perkins. Would you like to come up? Mm-hmm.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to present to you Diego Rodriguez. He's been with the department for a number of years, just promoted. Matter of fact, in March was his actual promotion, but wanted to wait so that we can actually have a true celebration. So what better day, the day after California reopens, that he be promoted to Fire Engineer? What I would like to do is ceremonially, we typically will have the pinning of the badge by their loved ones. So if we could have Diego's wife, new wife, Jackie, come up and pin the badge on him, that would be fantastic. They were just married too, by the way.
Congratulations.
Diego's also one of the members of our Kingsburg Fire Department Honor Guard. Kind of a special day for him. Perfect. Right? Fantastic. Good job. Thank you very much. That's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Congratulations.
You're more than welcome to come over to the fire station. We're actually having another formal, well, less formal badge pinning ceremony for him over there. So we'll have that. We have cake and refreshments. If anybody would like to partake, we'd be more than happy to have you. Thank you.
Okay.
Take a break, go get some cake, come back.
Congratulations. Would you like to take a picture up here with your family?
Yes.
Okay.
Let him take a picture. Definitely.
We'll both take. There we go. And now get the podium in there. Fire Chief fail everything in the way. Get one over there with you.
Yeah. Aparazzi here, one second. Now it's my turn. Perfect. Perfect.
Item number five, our joint meeting consent calendar. Council members, this is a little different than we're used to. There will be three different consent calendars that we will need to vote on. So the first consent calendar items are 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3. Those are to be approved by city council. I'll make a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.3.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next items that need to be approved by the Board of Directors of the Successory Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency is 5.4, which is a consent calendar item. I'll need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The third is to be approved only by Board of Directors of the Kingsburg Public Financing Authority, and that is item 5.5, which is approval of the minutes. Motion?
I'll motion to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number six, regular calendar, 6.1, Public Hearing, Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District Number 93-01. Consider approval of engineer's report and levy and collection of assessments with such district for fiscal year 21-22. Staff report prepared by Alma Collado and sponsor Finance Department. Yes.
Open the public hearing, please.
So I'll open the public hearing. Presentation by Finance Director Alma Collado.
Mayor North and council members, the item I have is an annual process where the city staff works with Wolden Financial Services to levy and collect special assessments for the Landscape Assessment District 93-01 to offset the cost of maintaining, servicing, and operating of the landscape and lighting improvements. On May 19, council adopted Resolution Number 2021-21 initiating the proceedings as well as Resolution Number 2021-23 declaring the intent to levy the annual assessments and setting today's public hearing. Staff request that the city council open the public hearing to receive testimonies. And up in conclusion of the public hearing, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2021-33 approving the engineer's report and setting the annual levy of assessments for the fiscal year 21-22. This concludes my report.
Thank you. I will open it up to council discussion. Any council discussion on this item? No? No? Okay, I will close council discussion and open to public comment. Do we have any public comments starting here in chambers on this item? No? Okay, we'll open it up to the phone lines. If we have any public comment on this item for anyone on the line, you can speak now. Hearing none, we will close public comment and bring it back to continued council discussion. Anything? Okay, so we will close the public hearing. Item H is to adopt the Resolution 2021-033. So if that is something we want to do, I'll need a motion for that. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-033.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Onto item 6.2, Public Hearing, Fiscal Year 21-22 Budget Review. Consider 21-22 Fiscal Year Recommended Executive Budget. Our sponsor is the City Manager's Office. We are going to open this public hearing. We will have a presentation by City Manager Alexander Henderson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Tonight is the public hearing in consideration of the fiscal year 2022 budget, which includes the general fund, enterprise funds, special revenue, internal funds, as well as special assessment funds. The council also sits as the Board of Directors for the City's Public Financing Authority, which includes our debt obligations, as well as the successor agency for our redevelopment agency. For fiscal year 22, the council is considering an all-funds budget of approximately $26.6 million. The budget is our blueprint for the coming year and is tied directly to our six strategic goals. The document before you tonight also includes important demographic and narrative information to provide valuable information to the reader. Outside of financial policy and appropriations, it provides a story of how and why the budget has been crafted. The letter from the city manager includes a summary of the current fiscal year, highlights projects, and outlines challenges and opportunities expected from the coming year. The document includes case studies on our PERS liability, economic development information, performance measures tied to goals and departments, and our full strategic plan. It also includes proposed financial policies that provide necessary direction with regards to city investment, procurement, and fund balance requirements. For fiscal year 22, staff is recommending a structurally balanced budget. Currently, we are recommending the use of fund balance from our Equipment Reserve Fund as well as our unfunded accrued liability fund for their intended purposes. Projected fiscal year 22 revenue increases when compared to last year or the current year include sales tax, property tax, transient occupancy tax, business licenses, and building permits. Much of these proposed increases is directly correlated to our position a year ago when we were unsure of the impact of COVID, of the COVID-19 pandemic on our fiscal health. The budget includes funding for capital improvement projects, economic development incentives, as well as quality of life and infrastructure investment. Overall, our all-funds budget will decrease 2.8% compared to last year due mainly to lower capital improvement budget projects from the current year. With previous prudent budgeting, we will not have to draw down any of the 20% reserves we maintain as outlined in our financial policies. Thank you to Mayor North, city council, staff, and the Kingsburg residents for your energy, effort, and passion to make Kingsburg the gem of the valley. A special thank you to the City's Finance Director, Alma Collado, Administrative Services Director Christina Windover, and our large management team, who are all part of preparing our fiscal year 2022 budget. With that, staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing and then adopt Resolution 2021-034 approving the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget, including the Kingsburg Public Finance Authority and successor agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency budgets. That concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I will move it to council discussion. Do we have council discussion on this item?
I'm just interested to hear.
And we'll bring it back. I do want to say thank you. I know that we've seen this a few times now, and I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work on this. I will now open it up to public comment on this item. If we have anyone here in chambers that would like to address the council on item 6.2, you're welcome to walk up to the microphone.
Do I need to state my name?
Yes.
Okay, Lance Jackson, I'm a resident of Kingsburg. I have a few questions on the budget. I don't know if I have a time limit. Should I just run through them and you answer them or?
There is a five-minute time limit, but you can definitely, you can definitely ask how quickly we can get to it.
All right, so I got a, I had a moment to look at the budget today, or a few moments, and I had a few questions that just kind of jumped out at me. One of them was, I didn't, I did not identify where the budget line items for the public works, wages, and benefits are located. I couldn't find those within the budget, so I was curious as to that. And then going through the summary pages of the, the summary pages for the budget line items, I think it was pages 89 through 140, the, I saw a few things that jumped out at me, one of them being, well, not jumping out at me was page 89, the general fund shows a wage and benefit increase of 8.5, 8.05%, which, which is consistent, which would be consistent with the wage scale that's rising due to the increases in minimum wage, which was an argument that was placed in the, in the, in subsequent summary pages. However, on page 105, I saw an increase, a wage increase for the city manager for 11.27%. And let me go back, I have one other question. When you say percent change, how is the percent change calculated? I could not ascertain if it was the, the proposed amount over, the adopted amount or the proposed amount over the actual, or the anticipated actual amount, but what, how the, the rate of increase was determined. Page 108 of the summaries, Administrative Services showed an increase of 17.05%. I would just, would like to know why. On page 109, Planning and Building shows an increase of 104.9%. Would like to know why. Page 110, Community Services shows an increase of 53.06%. And Community Services is one of the places where the reasoning given for the wage and benefit increase was due to the rise, to the 8% rise in minimum wage, which doesn't seem to follow. Page, let's see. Page 112, Public Works Administration showed no increase, which doesn't seem to be consistent with the minimum wage claim of, for substantiating rises in salary. Let's see. Pages 119 and 120, I understand that's the pool and the senior center, which are subservient to the Community Services summary, but the numbers were big. I mean, 88.3% for the pool and 44.7% for the senior center, 44.69%, sorry. And then on, let's see, on page 100, excuse me, 120, Fire and Ambulance showed an increase of 7.58%, which seemed to me to be perfectly in line. So just made these other instances glare a little bit more brightly. And so anyhow, the, those, those items, those half a dozen or less, four items that I looked at, the 2021 adopted budget had a, had a total of $644,842. The 2022 proposed budget is showing a number of $938,203, which is an increase of $293,361, which is an awful lot of money for salary increases. I mean, without knowing where they're going. And that really summarizes all my questions with regard to wage and increase issues on the budget. I'll leave measure E for another day.
You did a good job. Thirty-three seconds left. Thank you, Lance. Do you want to continue having public comment and then respond?
Sure.
Okay. So do we have anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this item? We're on item 6.2, talking about the budget right now. Right. Hi, Brenda.
Hi. I just got here, sorry I'm late. I was listening though. Is there anywhere, I don't have time to look, is there anywhere, do I have to say my name?
Yes.
Brenda Prado, I live here in Kingsburg. Is there anywhere in the budget for any type of animal control? Is my question? And if not, I'd like that to be added, if we could, at least somewhat, some kind of funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from inside council chambers tonight? No? Okay, then we will open it up to the phone lines for any public comment on item 6.2, which is our budget review. Anybody on the line want to make a comment? Hearing none, we will close the phone lines for this item. So before I close public comment, do, do I, do I ask you to respond, Alex? Okay. So we will close public comment. And now open it up to council discussion.
Yeah, would you like me to respond?
Yes. Yes.
I mean, can I have the? Hopefully not. I'll do my best here to. I think your first question, Mr. Jackson, was in, was in reference to public works, wages and benefits. Public works is, is spread out in a number of different areas, so our streets department is paid for by gas taxes, so it's under our special revenue fund. I think it's on. So if you went to page 123, you'd see there are, under gas tax, there are salaries, wages and benefits there for those positions. Our landscape, our parks division is in the general fund in a different spot. Our, our water operators are under our Water Enterprise Fund, so it just kind of depends. I mean, I'd be happy to show you all those individually. You referenced, I think you referenced page 105, see if I can. So you referenced the city manager line. So I guess the best way to describe this is, this is a summary page, so the easiest way to break them down would be go, would be to go back and look at the, their line item breakdowns. So the city manager's line item can be found on page 95. And you'll see here, individual breakouts, the top portion here makes up all of the wages and benefits. So if you look at the salary line, there's no change in salary for the city manager. The biggest change is this, this line right here, which is, which is PERS UAL. So we've had previous conversations before, but our PERS, the UAL is our unfunded accrued liability, which is the city responsibility to pay for pension obligations for employees that are no longer employed with the city. So.
Still alive.
Correct. Yes. It's our obligations, yes. So the payroll number is, is the portion that goes specifically to, to this position. And we've had a long conversation internally about the best way, the best representative way to show this UAL number, because from a grand scheme of things, it's an amount that the city owes, but you can't really tie it to existing employees. So you have to find a way, from a formula standpoint, to, to show that. So one of the ways that, that we've decided internally is to use a percentage of existing salaries, because, you know, there's just, I don't think that there's a perfect way to do it. You have to, you have to break it out some way. You know, we've got a number of different funds. You've got general fund, you've got, you know, enterprise funds, things like that. So it may be more representative, and we've talked about this, as opposed to, you know, because I appreciate your point, if you're looking at the city manager's line or any of these lines, you're assuming that these are associated employee costs, and they're, they're not necessarily. You could, we could probably bundle this UAL number, which we've broken out by individual employee. You know, we could probably, we could probably just put that in a non-departmental line and have it be one summed number, because it's, it's an amount that's due, but it's not, it's not a compensation for the individual employee as a law. And so I suspect that that's probably the case when you're talking about the administrative services line and some of these other ones, those large jumps, because you're also comparing it from last year, and this was a formulaic change that we made from last year to this year. So the, the amounts are more in a total, because our obligation is more in a total, but it's not a, it's not a compensation amount that existing employees are getting more than they were in the previous year, if that makes sense. You talked specifically about planning and building. The big reason for planning and building, I think the big change is that we, planning and building is really a function of the development that we have going on, so whether it's a commercial development or single-family development, there are offsetting revenues that help pay for that, right? So if we have a subdivision that goes in, there are fees that we have to pay to plan check those and provide engineering services to those as well. And in previous, you know, depending upon the activity level, those numbers go higher, and if, if there's, if there's higher activity and if there's lower activity, those numbers are lower. It's offset though by revenues. So looking at a, kind of looking at a, an expenditure line, and that's, that's part of the picture, it's an important part of the picture certainly, but there's another part of the picture where, where we show higher revenues offsetting those costs in planning and development. Sorry. It's okay. Community services, I would say probably the biggest change when you're looking at last year to this year is just the impacts of COVID. So Community Services encompasses our after-school recreation program, which is, which we usually run year-round, and last year we didn't have one, we didn't, or the year that we're in, because, because schools weren't in, weren't in session for a while, and then because of the changes that they had, we were unable to put on that program. So that's about $100,000 difference alone in that program from last year that we didn't have, that we are going to have this year because we're planning on it. Those program costs are offset by participation numbers too. So they're, those are fee-based. The, the public, the public works admin, a number that you referenced, there's not a change there, because administration, that, that, that account, those are salary employees, so they're not impacted by minimum wage. So that's why there's no increase that you would see in some of the other places. And then I think the, the pool and the senior center are relatively similar too, because our programming was different last year, because we didn't have a program last summer because of COVID. because of COVID. And our senior center line, our expenditures are certainly higher, because we are now actually putting together all of those meals and delivering all of those meals, so there's now more part-time, you know, labor that we've had to bring onboard in order to provide that service, where in the past, we had a partnership with the Fresno Madera Agency on Aging, and those costs are being offset by federal COVID relief dollars as well. So I think, you know, I think that's what I have for your original, from what I wrote on your notes. As far as animal control, there is a, there is an amount budgeted. There is an amount budgeted for our contract with Second Chance. That just, I don't know if you're specifically asking about animal, like an animal control officer, animal control services, there is not an amount budgeted at this time for that, so we don't have either a contract with Second Chance or a full-time position currently created within the city. So the the costs that we have budgeted at this time are related to our our contract costs for animals that we take to Second Chance.
Thank you. Any continued council discussion on this item?
Did that answer all your questions, sir?
No.
For the most part? No?
Well, no, I, well, I was speaking to the Community Services and the and the and the pool and the and the pool, actually. I went back and looked at two thousand nineteen as well, and there is a jump in two thousand twenty, or two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, I guess it was, prior to COVID.
So so there are, yes, that's fair, so there, the vast majority of those wages are part-time wages that are minimum wage raises. So from two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two, you will have had three different, you'll have had three separate minimum wage increases.
Well, for two thousand, for the last year, from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, there's a jump, and two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, there's a jump, so I come to.
Sure.
But that was my, so and I guess my last thing was, how are they calculating the percent change?
Just in the budget?
Yeah, how is it calculated?
Oh, sure, so this this number, I'll try and blow it up here. This percent change number is a comparison of the budgeted number from two thousand twenty-one to the proposed number to two thousand twenty-two. See, if you went to. So if you if you look, for example, at, this is for the the pool, if you looked at wages and benefits for the two thousand nineteen actual of about this amount, about eighty-three thousand, and then the two thousand twenty-two proposed, it's roughly roughly the same. But if you're looking at the adopted numbers because of what we had last year, if you're comparing it to those two years, that's that's going to be the the major difference. And and the senior center number, again, the wage and benefit number is is for sure higher, but it's because of, you know, basically a change in how we do business at the senior center with providing those meals.
Anything else clarified, Lance, or you good with that? Okay. Brenda?
Was the amount that is paid to Second Chance annually, I can't find it.
Was it twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, there's a budgeted amount, I think I have in there for next year of twenty-six thousand, I could I could get you actual numbers, so it's based upon the amount of animals, so there's a there's a per-animal amount, so it's it's not a, it's not a.
It's not flat monthly after all?
It's not a flat monthly.
That's not a start though, right? That's per animal.
It's always been two hundred and fifty dollars a dog.
Right.
There was an, there was an estimated amount of what we, you know, when we first started the contract, of how many animals we assumed there would be, and so there was an average monthly amount that we assumed would be, but there are months where there's no amount paid second chance.
Just was wondering, so they're getting paid regardless if they're getting any from Kingsburg?
No. So it's 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 based upon a per-animal amount. So if we if we have a month where there's ten, they're getting paid for all ten of those. If we have a month where there's zero, they get no amount from Kingsburg. It's a, it's a true cost.
So that budget, that number in there is essentially, that's your cap, let's say it's twenty-six, and as long as it's within that cap, that's what you're paying for Second Chance.
So we'll pay actual amounts. I mean, we are, you know, we're using trending information from previous years, and that's what we're basing that amount on, but there are a couple of times a year that we have to do true-ups on all of our line items based upon actual costs, so it just depends upon, you know, if it's a thousand dollars over, you know, the auditors aren't going to ask us to make a budget amendment, if it's, you know, ten thousand or twenty thousand dollars over any line item, something like that, then we'll have to make a, you know, an adjustment, and all those, all those adjustments go to our finance committee and then ultimately come before the city council for approval.
Thank you. And we'll bring it back to council discussion. Any council members have any more discussion points on this item?
I have a question for Alex. In the capital improvement projects on the very top, it's infrastructure for the digital records management, is that what we were talking about with all of the files that we have, getting them to be stored?
Please surface.
Right? Okay, I just wanted, I was like making sure that's, because that's a lot of money, making sure that's what that was. Thank you.
Any other council discussion?
I think given this past year and looking at the budget where we're at now, I know compared to some other cities as as comparison, I think we're doing a good job, so thank you to, again, to staff and everyone for, and all the different leaders in the different departments as well, to really look over each your department and what you guys really need to, so thank you.
I just have one question. The senior center, that's most likely going to be ongoing for a while, where we're going to have to supplement with the meals and everything, correct?
I think that there's a plan to return to in-person in the early part of July, so we're, you know, Adam was working on that with with the senior inquiry, but yes, at least for the for the time being, we'll be, you know, putting those meals together. I know that there's, there hasn't been firm guidance with F M AAA on when they may reinstate those contracts that provide some subsidy for the senior center and then also provide meals for the senior center. So for at least, you know, we're we're we're, we have plans for at least the next year.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? No? 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 Okay, I will close the public hearing, and now item H is to adopt the resolution, so I'll need a motion, if that's where we want to move.
I'll make that motion.
No second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Item six point three, GAN limit adoption for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget figures, reported, the report was prepared by Finance Director Alma Colado, and this is action only by the city council, presentation by Finance Director Alma Colado.
Mayor North and council members, tonight's item is an annual process where the city council must approve a resolution to adopt a two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two GAN limit for the city for the new fiscal year budget figures, using the county or the city growth percentage for calculation. City staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-five, approving the GAN limit calculation for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, using the city growth percentage, which is one point fifty-nine percent. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Council discussion on this item? Do we have any public comment on this item? We'll start here in chambers? No? We'll open up the phone lines. Any public comment on item six point three? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to C, which is adopting the resolution.
I'll make that motion to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-five.
And I will second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto item six point four, Community Facilities District, two thousand seventeen dash zero one, for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year levy, staff report prepared by City Manager Alexander Henderson, this is action only by the city council, and presentation by Valerie Merklin, did I say that correctly? Senior Associate DTA. Yes, we can.
That's great, yeah, I just wanted to thank Alex and Abby of the staff for helping us. DTA has prepared the documents that are in your packet, according to the rate and method enforcement, that was the group when the CFD was formed three years ago, so if you have any questions about in ad hoc, I'd be happy to answer those three, we have to be on the vote from our offices on.
Do we have any council discussion on this item? Any questions?
Just, just a quick comment from staff, the the CFDs are very similar to the landscaping lighting that you guys adopted in the first item, the CFDs obviously pay for more services, which is why we've, you know, two thousand seventeen council decided to invoke those for all, for all new residential development. So the traditional landscaping lighting districts only pay for that, and these these fees can help pay for additional things like police and fire services and other things, obviously, that come with the expansion and growth, so.
Can I ask a question?
Let me ask the council first, and then I'll open up for public. Any more council discussion on this item? Nope? Okay, if there's any public comment, if you can come forward up to the microphone.
I just have a question.
You'll have to state your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg, please.
Chris Peterson, Kingsburg resident for decades. This, is this for new development? That's how I'm reading it, but I just wanted a clarification. So the new developments that are currently going in, that have gone in the past year or broke around the past year or something? Okay. And future?
Since two thousand seventeen.
Oh, okay.
I think my development was the first one, the Lennar development, is that correct?
What? You're the last one.
Okay. Any other public comment on this item? No, we'll open it up to the phone lines if there's any public comment. Hearing none, we will move on to C, which is adopting the resolution. I'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six point five, Vaccination Clinic and American Rescue Plan Act update, staff report by our city manager, and our presentation by City Manager Alexander Henderson. I forgot to say thank you, Valerie. So, presentation by Alexander Henderson.
Good, Abby. Madam Mayor, members of council, a few brief updates. As it relates to vaccinations, I think we announced last week that the county has asked us to close our local site on June thirtieth, so we will run through that day. They gave their final, last first ghost appointments for Pfizer on on June ninth, so that they could accommodate all second doses within the June thirty timeframe. The clinic will remain open with Johnson and Johnson one-dose vaccines for those who wish to make an appointment or they are taking walk-ups. The reason for closing it was just the continual decline of of appointments, we were averaging between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five appointments over the last few weeks, and it was steadily decreasing. That's all I have with regards to vaccinations. Any questions regards to the vaccination clinic?
Any questions regarding vaccinations?
Then I'll move on to the American Rescue Plan update, so there have been some changes since the last time.
Right, a lot more.
The Treasury Department has released additional information, most specifically, the state of California has provided documentation that the cities, the two hundred and ninety-one smaller cities or those cities with populations less than fifty thousand are required to fill out in order to receive the American Rescue Plan funding. We completed our documentation last week on Thursday, on the tenth. So an updated timeline is, is that the state is is anticipating distributing funding by the end of June or possibly early July, that will be fifty percent of the amount that's due to us. Perhaps the most significant change is that our updated estimate is two million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, this is roughly six hundred and seventeen thousand, or twenty-eight percent higher than our original estimate that we were anticipating getting. Small cities and towns will be required to submit a project and expenditure report to the Treasury annually on the use of these funds. Funds must be obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, but are not required to be spent until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. So you have to encumber them, but they don't have to be spent for five years. Our first report to Treasury will be due by October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and will cover activity from the date of the award to September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. Subsequent annual reports must be submitted by October thirty-first each year, and all financial records and supporting documentation related to the award must be retained for a period of five years after all funds have been expended. So that information's important, just because when we get into our discussion, our community discussion about how those funds get spent, it's just something to take into consideration of how we can make sure that we can track and that there's no issue of if and when we are audited by the federal government, that any of those funds have to be returned. You know, we've talked previously, but rescue plan funds by local governments specifically can be used to address the public health emergency or those things related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, so there are some eligibility requirements in that guidance, and we've talked about a few of those previously. And there are some allowances for infrastructure improvements, including water sewer, our Braundad infrastructure as well, but we are trying to get specifics on other, you know, whether it be parks improvements or things like that, just so that we can have a conversation about everything that's allowable uses of those funds. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but that's my update for this evening.
I have, oh, go ahead. Is that okay? I have a question. With the ARPA funds, is there a possibility with, because we put the utilities kind of on hold, like if you couldn't pay for it, you didn't have to pay for it, right? And so my first question is, right now, we're still doing that, even though this has, even though we're reopened? I guess that's my first question, are we still allowing that? And then the second question is, with these ARPA funds, can we, you know, subsidize that cost so that those residents maybe are relieved from that debt instead of having to pay for it? Just the ones who couldn't, not everybody.
Correct. So I guess first part of the question is, is so the, you know, specifically for us is related to our water utility, and so, you know, if if people didn't pay, we had to offer payment plans and things like that, but we were limited by legislation, which has been extended by the governor through the end of September of this year, from turning off those utilities. So if you didn't pay for your, you know, your your water bill, you know, final recourse usually for us, with, you know, to a certain amount of payment is to to shut off your water, and so we've been unable to do that at this time. The governor's indicated that he, or that the state, he's working through the legislature to delegate or allocate one billion of the state's ARPA funding to pay back utilities for that lost revenue. So in essence, it's sort of a way that the state is relieving that debt and then paying back those utilities. Those specifics have not been released yet, he just, he just came out with his proposal last, last week, I believe. You know, from a city standpoint, I I believe that that's an eligible use, is, you know, to relieve that. is, you know, to relieve that debt or to pay back, you know. Lost revenue is an eligible use of funds, so whether that's lost revenue for sales tax dollars or transient occupancy tax dollars or lost utility fees, that, those are eligible uses for ARPA funding. So the question will be whether or not we have to use the city's allocation, the potential that there's another allocation which would then allow us to extend our uses.
And we would qualify for the state's allocation of that relief funding? Or is that still too early?
I believe every supply, every provider will be eligible for that. So it's a statewide program. I guess the question will be how much money eventually gets allocated and what that number is statewide, and then, yeah, obviously, the details of who's eligible for, for that relief.
Do you know when we'll hear from the state about that? Before September, most likely.
Exactly, yeah. No, I, they didn't release a timeline on when they expected to resolve his, his proposal.
Do we have an estimated loss that we've had as a city by unpaid bills?
Just based upon budgeting, somewhere between two and four hundred thousand.
Is that a normal loss or is that, like, is that a typical year or that is different because of the pandemic?
It's difficult to know entirely what the base rate fees would be. That's based upon, at least a portion of that is based upon what are usually penalty fees that we recover when people are late or don't pay. And so because we have not been, you know, collecting those fees through this time, that's kind of how we're projecting what those costs would be. It's, it's difficult to know who's deciding not to pay because they know they can't be shut off, or, you know, it's just hard to ascertain that.
Any other council discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act update? No? I will open it up to any public comment, starting here in the chambers, on this item? No? Okay, I will open it up to the phone lines. Any public comment on item six point five? Okay, hearing none, then I'll bring it back to council. This was for information only, so there's no action necessary at this time. We'll move on to item six point six. Our agreement with, you've got to help me with this name. L and T, to complete a solid waste rate study. Staff report by our Public Works Director, Daniel Galvez, and our presentation also by our Public Works Director, Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor North and council members. Here tonight to ask for council to approve the professional service agreement with L and T for consulting services for our solid waste rate study. So in May and twenty, of twenty fourteen, the city did go out for RFP for solid waste services, specifically for disposal, so trash recycling, green waste. We are in about a seven, in the seventh year of that ten-year contract. At the time of the initial contract, the, the rates were locked in, so the, the city were, was able to save some money. But as the years have gone by, the, the contract does allow Mid Valley to increase costs through the CPI. Those costs are starting to, or have been costing more than the revenues that we're bringing in. So the costs that are associated with solid waste include wages, benefits, contract billing with the providers, supplies. And those costs have not been passed on to our residents. So the last increase that residents have had for solid waste was in two thousand nine. The solid waste fund also includes street sweeping. The council in February did elect to extend the street sweeping contract for another five years, which locked in the rates, but it does encompass street sweeping as well. To best evaluate the fund and to ensure solvency, staff has recommended that we use a consultant to assist with the evaluation, the rate study, the workshops and to, and to kind of work through the Prop two eighteen process. So in order to raise the funds, the city does need to go through a Proposition two eighteen process, which I'll cover in a few minutes. But in addition to the CPI increases, there's also new legislation such as SB thirteen eighty-three, which does require organic recycling for commercials. So it's basically food, food recycling in the green waste bins. So the city did receive three proposals. They, they, some of them, those proposals were presented to the Finance Committee twice this year. At that time, we were waiting for an additional one. We ended up getting one, and when staff reviewed the, all of the proposals, we did recommend that we proceed with L and T. So they did provide the lowest cost proposal of twenty-two five. Like I said, some of the deliverables include, you know, a five-year look back of operation, review of overhead costs and allocation, cash flow revenue projections, in-person meetings. And then if approved, we would kick those off pretty much as soon as possible. So the funds are proposed in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. They would be covered through the solid waste funds. So if it's approved, our first step in the two eighteen process would be to start working on a rate study and then come back and do a workshop and present to council for it. So the two, Prop two eighteen process, essentially, we'd, we'd try to work that thing backwards of when we'd want to implement. So just to kind of give the council as well as the, the public kind of an idea of what that process is. So we would report to council with the proposed service fees through a workshop. We'd, we'd have it here at a council meeting. We would set a public hearing date forty-five days after. We would post notices and send copies through, to all of our residents. At the public hearing, they would turn in their votes. If it's fifty percent plus one, then the changes, I'm sorry, if the opposition is more than fifty percent plus one, then the Prop two eighteen could be denied. But other than that, appear to answer any questions that you or the public may have.
Does council have any discussion or questions on this item?
I have a couple for you. So how long do they think the study's going to take?
I think they, they propose about six months, so they were kind of hoping to get started kind of like in, in the beginning of May, but I don't think there would be an issue starting in July and kind of hoping if approved and everything goes well, we're probably looking at sometime in January, either beginning or late January.
And then we're, like you said, this is in our seventh year of our ten-year contract with Mid Valley. So when do you anticipate the RFP would go out a year, six months in advance of that contract?
So the city does have an option to do two additional five-year renewals. So, yeah, that, that, those would come back to council as well for approval, whether you guys would decide to extend those for another five years. And then five years after that, you could do an additional five-year extension.
The Prop two eighteen, I think, will be really telling for us. We'd have to do a rate increase or anything.
Any other council discussion on this item? Any public comment? Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Any questions? Hearing chambers? I will open it up to the phone lines. Any public comment on item six point six? Hearing none, we'll close it, close the phone lines. It says action as deemed necessary. Do we need to give staff direction? What? Approve it?
If acceptable, staff is recommending to approve the, the agreement.
Okay, then I will need a motion for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six point seven, Community Development Block Grant for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Project discussion, city staff report and presentation by our city engineer, Dave Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. City of Kingsburg participates in the Community Development Block Ground Program that's administered by Fresno County for several of the local agency, agencies here in the county. Recently, they've put out a call for projects for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The CDBG funding allows for development of public infrastructure improvements within certain areas of town. The county has developed a, or has determined a CDBG eligible area for the city of Kingsburg. It's recently been updated, so the last time they updated it, it was the neighborhood north of Sierra Street, bounded by Tenth and Eighteenth, and I think Klepper on the north. That's recently changed due to the recent census. So the, the eligible area now is triangular area bounded by Sixth Avenue Drive, Mailer Street and Ninety-Nine, so the shaded area there. So within that area, we have opportunity to do a variety of different projects. We can do street, street reconstruction projects, sidewalk improvements, lighting, and we can also do alleys. I know we've discussed that recently. So we can also do projects outside that CDBG eligible area, but it's limited to enhancing compliance with American with Disability Act pedestrian-type improvements to remove the barriers for disabled access. So what we've done is we've put together a, a few candidate projects. The first couple are within the CDBG eligible area. First one is the Workington Mailer Street Alley Improvements from Tenth to Fourteenth. That alley is currently just a dirt alley. No other really improvements within the alley. So the proposal would be to construct a concrete valley gutter and install asphalt paving and alley approaches on, on, on the ends of the alleys to comply with our improvement standards. Another project within the CDBG eligible area would be reconstruction of Mariposa Street from Fourteenth to Eighteenth. So I noticed, I, I noted on the side there it has a pavement condition index of thirty-six, which is not good. So it's a, it's a street that's in, in need of repair. We've also identified a couple of projects, like I said, outside of the CDBG eligible area having to do with ADA compliance. First one is Union Street Sidewalks from Tenth to Fourteenth. So that stretch has sidewalks, but there's a lot of gaps in the sidewalk. So it wouldn't be one, taking a street that didn't have sidewalks and trying to put them on. It's just filling in the gaps so that you could, you can use the sidewalks that are already there and doing the ramp improvements as well as installing some street lighting for, for pedestrian travel. And lastly, we've identified a project to upgrade our disabled parking stalls on Draper Street. So there's several handicap or, or disabled parking stalls on, on Draper Street, but they're not necessarily ADA compliant. They don't have the offloading area. All of the slopes and the ramps don't necessarily meet all of the current ADA guidelines. So that project would improve all of those stalls along, along Draper Street. So we have enough, we have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in CDBG funds built up at this point. That would be enough to do one of these four projects. So currently, staff is, is looking for council input on a preferred project. The next step would be to submit an application and then ultimately come back and hold a public hearing on the project. If the council chose to not submit an application, we could actually loan our funds to another agency. And those, we don't lose them, we just would kind of defer them. And then we, we could add future year funding and do a bigger project. So if you wanted to go that route, we could do that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions or get your feedback on.
Council discussion or questions on this item?
I had one comment. So we get to do one and you have to have a public hearing first, right?
Uh, yes.
Pick that one, right? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, so I think tonight what we would do is hopefully, hopefully narrow it down to one of these four projects. If we could, if we could get direction. And then the next thing that we would do is, well, yeah, I think, I guess our proposal is to bring it back on July, in July twenty-first for the public hearing. But staff, I think, would need to start working on the application before then. So the official kind of approval of the project would be on the twenty-first of July, but we do need some direction tonight so that we can start putting the application together before then.
So we're narrowing it down to one tonight? That we, okay, I thought, I thought it was the four were going in front of the public to pick which one they wanted to see improved, and then we did the application.
I think the public hearing is basically to say, the public hearing is essentially to say, this is the project, this is the application, we're going to, you know, just got to go through that, go through that process. And so that's why we're here before you tonight, is to kind of introduce the projects and then determine what, what direction you'd like us to move into.
On our list of streets, as far as Mariposa Street reconstruction goes, since it's got the PCI of thirty-six?
It's down there, yeah. So we basically just start at the bottom of the list and we kind of try to work our way up. And, and we, we do, we do look at them and try to, like, for our, our larger annual street program, we do try to group them together to kind of, you know, make it more, you know, to kind of get our, the most bang for our buck there, grouping them together, but.
That, that street's been on that list for a while.
Yeah, it's definitely one of the worst streets, yeah.
And as far as the upgrade disabled parking stalls, would that be part, could tie in also with the downtown Kingsburg strategic plan?
It would. That is one of the recommendations in that plan, yeah.
So there's options to cover that one through a different grant?
Yeah, I think we can pursue, you know, a lot of these projects different, different ways, so. If they don't get done through the CDBG, I think we would pursue getting them done through other, other means.
Well, I, I think tonight I wouldn't want to move forward with the alley personally, but I do find it interesting that it's on this list because we just talked about this. And like, what are opportunities for funding for maybe something that's not on the top of our list, alleys?
Right.
But it is interesting to see it on this list because here is an example of something that we can do.
And I think last time we, we did talk about, with the CDBG program, we used to do a lot of alley work because that's one of the programs that we can actually utilize to do alley repairs. And so I think in light of the recent discussion, I thought it'd be a good idea to put it on the list.
Yeah, I like seeing it on the list, but I know that, I think that the streets take precedence over alleys. Even though I know that, you know, I've had, that's in my district and I've had complaints about that alley. And it's not the only, there's several alleys in Kingsburg that need, need paving, you know. Before we had the builders, the builders start paving the alleys in the neighborhood, so. But, yeah, it is nice to see it on there and hopefully we can, in the future, start paving some of the alleys with those funds.
I think with the Mariposa Street being like one of the worst ones, that that would, in, in my opinion, be one of the prior, the priorities out of the four. Especially with the disabled parking, a few of those other things we can get covered with other grants.
And I really just think which, which one of those things is used the most frequently by the most people. I think that's why the Mariposa Street one just seems to make, in my opinion, that's the most ones. It appeals to the most amount of people. Alleys are a problem, but they're mostly used by people walking out or trash trucks. And it's a priority, it's just not the highest priority right now.
Absolutely. And I definitely think that, and this is not to say that people do not use the parking stalls or, you know, need a sidewalk, but we can find funding for those projects elsewhere, and this is such a bad street. So that's why I'm supportive of moving forward with the Mariposa Street project.
Fantastic. We'll see you on the twenty-first.
On July twenty-first is when we'll have public input on, and public input. Okay, so you have direction?
I do. Thank you.
I have a question, Dave. It's about sidewalks.
Sidewalks, okay.
Do we have a PCI for city sidewalks?
No, we have a, we have a, what's called an ADA transition plan. So we have to, we have to prepare that and update that every five years to, to remain eligible for federal transportation funding. So we have a document that inventories the entire city, all of the sidewalks, notes whether they're there, whether they're not there, whether they're ADA compliant, whether they're not, and makes a, basically a list of, of improvements that, yeah, that need to be made. and makes a, basically a list of, of improvements that, yeah, that need to be made. Then we kind of chip away at that list annually.
Because I know Marion Street, right across from the supermarket, sidewalk is really raised and I believe. A few months ago, a lady fell and broke her, broke her hip or broke her wrist or something.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm-
And I think our Public Works Department probably tries to stay on top of that the best they can too, in terms of, in terms of the heaving and the repairs.
Residents, yeah, it's raised pretty high.
Marion Street?
Right across the street from the supermarket, yeah.
From the supermarket, gotcha. Daniel and I could take a look at that. Yeah, Daniel and I could take a look at that.
The other thing that I know citizens can do is they can submit it online, the requests for things like that. And I know Public Works jumps right on those.
All right, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are moving on to item seven, Council Report and Staff Communication. 7.1, Community Services Commission. We will meet next Wednesday. We have not met since our last meeting. 7.2, Public Safety Committee.
We have not met since our last meeting.
7.3, Chamber of Commerce.
They met, I missed the meeting, but I followed up with them and got their notes for it. So starting Thursday, they're going to start having concerts in the park again at Memorial Park.
This Thursday?
Yes. And that's going to be for six consecutive Thursdays. It's going to start at eight. Just prior to the concerts in the park, they're going to be having farmers markets again. So it'll be before, right before every concert. So from five to eight, farmers markets, eight on is the concert in the park. The Independence Day Fireworks Celebration is going to be on the 3rd of July. The bowl at the high school is going to be closed, but people can come to the grass practice field and be there. They're going to have food and drink vendors there for that also. And it's going to be a donation they're going to ask for, but other than that, it's free. The only other thing is they are working on scheduling a truck show for October 9th. I think they're going to be working with you to work on their permitting and stuff like that for that. It's going to be all trucks, any styles, any years allowed. And they're going to try and put a cap of 400 entries on it because they're anticipating quite a few. And then that should be presented to council for approval.
You said October?
October 9th. Just something, something different.
And they're asking for donations for fireworks right now since they can't charge tickets.
And they have had people walk in and give money, which they're thankful for.
One thing to clarify too, when we have chamber here on the door, this is not the Chamber of Commerce. I know there was that mistake this week and that's why the door was, was locked. It is next to Casaro's if you are looking to donate towards fireworks. 7.4, Economic Development. Did you want to give the update on that?
We-
And also the Chamber of Commerce has a mail slot that you can put an envelope in with-
There you go.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, I'm sure everyone in here already knows that, but just-
Maybe we can put a note on our door here.
Thank you. EDC met on Tuesday and the main focus was about the downtown Kingsburg strategic plan. I know that they'll be out there talking to some more people about it and the bid and the Chamber of Commerce as well, so stay tuned for that. And the EDC did vote to approve it and move it forward as well. We dusted off, we talked about dusting off the agritourism plan again since that got put on the back burner for 2020. So Julian's going to pull that back out. And those are the main, two main things.
Thank you. 7.5, Finance Committee.
Has not met. They're busy with the budget.
7.6, Planning Commission, met last week and the discussion was on a truck terminal on Cam and 99. The items that the Planning Commission did move forward with is zoning and annexing it because it is in our sphere of influence. So they did approve that.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, for what then?
For truck terminal. On Cam and 99.
Those items will come before the council, because there's a proposed annexation. So likely at the July 21st meeting, you will see it.
7.7, SKGSA.
That was so much better than having to read the whole thing out. So yeah, we met tonight right before the council meeting. So it was a little loud, a little hectic, but we went over and approved the Prop 68 grant agreement. We looked over our budget and just kind of had the chance to regroup because I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting. So that's it. And with the details I can provide, but it was kind of hectic right before the meeting. Here tonight, you have people talking to me and all that good stuff. So, yeah, that's that on that.
Thank you. And 7.8, the Business Improvement District?
Yes, so we've had two meetings since our last council meeting. So the first one, we had the regularly scheduled meeting. We did not have quorum, but that same strategic, downtown strategic plan was brought to the board and they were able to look that over, which as, it will come to us, but, you know, it had promoting biking and cars, shared parking and just having that discussion and starting it was the first board that this was brought to. They also discussed social media. It's kind of a reoccurring thing as they're discussing social media and that dragged me to the second meeting when they had quorum, which was last week. And I wasn't able to go to the second one, but it was last week? Yeah. And there will be another one next week, so I'm going to do another one. But the social media discussion keeps kind of dragging on because they're trying to find what they can afford and what they can pay for to be able to promote the BID and really what they are because I think it's still so new to a lot of people since it's the first year. And then one of the board members also brought up the trolley hosting people back and forth from the gun club shoot that's taking place, I believe it's the last week of June, right?
22nd is the first day.
22nd, right, so it's just two of the days. And so they're looking through, you know, how much they're going to put up for that and what are the best hours and can people come back and forth? So that's all that was discussed, they're going to have another meeting next week.
Thank you. 7.9, Council of Governments.
We meet next week.
7.10, Council Member Reports. Start on this end.
So city manager, council member Roman and myself met with Supervisor Mendez last week to talk about, you know, that we're going to be in a drought and we're talking about water. So really important meeting, very informational and it was nice to see him and catch up with him. I wanted to just do a couple of thank yous because I think it should be recognized. So in my district, last week, I had a neighbor whose flagpole was vandalized and taken down and she had been experiencing a lot of problems. And so I got in touch with the police, our police chief, Dadian, and talked with him about just the great service that Officer Carey provided to this resident. He not only went out there and listened to her and, you know, did the report, but he gifted her an American flag, which I thought was very sweet. And I thought it was important for me to go out there and talk to her too just because of, you know, the things that were happening and the concerns there. So it was really nice to connect with her, but a special thank you to our officers for really going above and beyond. They don't have to do that and I think that's what makes Kingsburg very special. Second, we've been having some, some issues at Athwell Park, which is the park impact district across the street from where I live. And it's really unfortunate that there have been a lot of tagging on the play structures. You know, we've gotten comments from different parents talking about, and I've experienced it too when I'm there with my son, of just, just kids being kids, but saying some maybe inappropriate things or it's just a little too much for the playground that's supposed to be provided for, what, three to five or like six? So special shout out to one of the parents, she knows who she is, for reaching out to the city council and suggesting that we maybe put up some park benches or tables in the shade far to the gate of Athwell Park. So, and the fence right there by the basin. So maybe those kids would be deterred to hang out there and have their language and conversation there instead of on the play structure. And so thank you to Public Works and Alex for helping me get those tables up there, those three. And, you know, they're not permanent, but I think it will help in the meantime of just trying to get that activity to move. And then another special shout out to Public Works for cleaning up that tagging so quickly and just always doing a great job at that park. They're always there. And that concludes my little update. Thank you.
And do you have anything?
Yeah, last Monday night, we had the ribbon cutting for the, yeah, the hash field. And I was going to say the Babe Ruth Field, you know, it's a full-size Babe Ruth Field. And it was nice, all, all the players were there, you know, all the coaches and players. And it was a nice ceremony, the hash family was there and got to thank them. And it was, it was a nice presentation and threw out a first pitch, you know. Michelle's got to throw out the first pitch and that stuff, so.
And you gave a great speech.
You gave your first speech.
Oh, yeah. It was a nice, it was just a nice ceremony, so it's funny.
Thank you for attending. He London or Michelle?
I just, I brought up at the EDC meeting about the Swedish Mill because I noticing that it's starting to look not the best again. And so I mentioned about having an update from them at some point. So at a future meeting to bring the owner back and see what their plan is because I know it keeps changing. And I did a ride along with the police department and we drove by there and it's not looking great again. So we can, I think we'd all like an update and see where we're at with that since we haven't heard from them over a year, what the plan is.
I have two things. The opening of the state shoot is on the 22nd and I have been asked to attend. And so I'm extending that invitation if anybody would like to attend on the morning of the 22nd with me. Also, city manager Alex and I met with Thomas Hiley from the Business View Magazine. Was it yesterday? Via Zoom. And they are a magazine that focuses on community development and growth in California communities under 50,000 in population. And so he sought out Kingsburg to do a feature on Kingsburg in this magazine. So we just had an initial conversation with him. He's going to talk to his director and then they will contact us back to see what they can feature Kingsburg on in this magazine. So that's an exciting opportunity. We have not heard back from him yet today, correct? Okay. 7.11, City Managers Report.
Just one reminder that we, our next regular meeting on July 7th is canceled, so that's all I have.
Item eight, Future Agenda Items. We have 8.1, Water Board Notice of Drought Conditions. Is there a sponsor?
Yes, so we, we received this email from, from the Water Board. Councilmember Hurtado mentioned our conversation with Supervisor Mendez and one of the conversations that, one of the things that he recommended was that all the communities and at least in his district look at conservation efforts or potential mandates in those cities. So after receiving this letter and having that conversation, staff thought it might be prudent to bring that conversation back at a future meeting to discuss if there's anything that the council would like to explore with regards to potential water reduction here locally. And we can talk about what we did dating back to 2014, the last time that, that we were in drought conditions. So I just, I wanted to bring that for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Item nine, we are going to adjourn the joint meeting of the Board of Directors of the City of Kingsburg Public Financing Authority and the Board of Directors of the Successor Agency of the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency. The Kingsburg City Council will now adjourn into closed session.